The Thursday, October 22, 2015, special meeting of the Harbor Advisory Board Strategic Planning Workshop. We have a quorum, and so I guess right now is a moment of silence, if we could. And then we can step up. Dana, could you lead us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready? Do you get it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, this is a special meeting, and I noticed that there is a couple people in the audience. Is there, I guess the public comment is for the items that are on the agenda, or isn't it usually off the agenda?
No, for special meetings, the public comment is just for the item on the agenda, or items on the agenda. It's not, we only have one.
Okay.
Because it's a special meeting. Normal meeting, yeah, you do general public comment in the beginning, and then specific to the staff reports later, but this is different.
All right, so, do you have anything to speak about, Richard? You state your name, and...
Richard Sadowski, citizen of Moro Bay, and I also sit on the Planning Commission. And we had a meeting a couple days ago, and I was really encouraged by the Scott Graham, the Planning Director's statement that we are going to be finalizing a consultant for the LCP GP update, which is very encouraging. And I feel that in the spirit of, in the spirit of good government transparency, maybe you as a Chair from the Harbor Advisory can get together with Commissioner Deft, you know, and the Mayor, and maybe we can do, after this workshop, find out what the high points are, and do a little collaboration, and, you know, in a public arena, so people can see good government in practice.
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Good evening. Myla Jo Bruton Sadowski. And this is, what I have to say, has to, since we're talking about strategic planning and all that goes in with that, I'd like to make an announcement that Fugro Palagos is doing an acoustic survey, supposed to have started on Monday, in the area immediately adjacent to the north face of the rock, going up to the beach line and out. And I want to know if you were aware of that, if you were given notice of that. And, yeah, I think there's, we have a problem. I'm the Chair of Coast Alliance, and we're asking for the survey that's supposed to go on this week to be held until a proper 21-day pre-survey notification can be received by the public, the general public. And as going to that, I have something from the Low Energy Offshore Geophysical Permit Program, One-Year Program Implementation Report, October 14, 2014, Section 3, 3.1 Survey Notification Requirements. Because low-energy geophysical surveys result in the presence of survey vessels and associated equipment that may interrupt or affect other ocean users in the survey area, it is important to ensure interested and affected parties are aware that a survey will be taking place.
You know, I don't mean to interrupt you, but, you know, unfortunately, this meeting is specifically for strategic planning, and this is a specific pertinent issue that is not on our agenda, and really is not really kind of allowed, to be honest with you.
Okay, I was getting to the part-
Okay.
-that involves the Harbor Master Office.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Is it, is it part of a strategic plan for the harbor?
It's a plan that should already be happening at the harbor, as per state law.
All right, let's hear that.
Okay. Additionally, in an effort to alert local individuals or parties who may not be subscribers to the OGPP listserv, permittees are required to provide a 21-day notice of survey activities via email or regular mail to the U.S. Coast Guard, local notice to mariners, as well as to harbor masters and dive shops located in near the survey area. This ensures that local entities and individuals who may not be aware of the OGPP are alerted of upcoming geophysical activities in their area. And I don't, that didn't happen, so we have, we have a problem that we need to pick up on, and since you're harbor.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other public comment? Hearing none, like to take the meeting back to us. Is there any place in here for public comment on anything else on, on, on agenda, or no?
Just what's on the agenda.
Okay.
We've got comments for the agenda, we've got comments for the agenda, if not-
No, okay.
That's it.
So, this is our meeting, we can conduct it any way we want. I was going to facilitate our discussion and maybe utilize a blackboard in the background. So Eric was kind enough to print out to us the 10, I believe, LEAP, strategic plans that the city has, that they formulated, and maybe that is something that we should look at and tie some of our strategic plans, doesn't necessarily need to be that way. If we feel, as a board, that there's other things that we need to look at, that's why we're here. And how do we go, what would we like to achieve at the end of this meeting? A list of maybe 10 goals. And how do we achieve that? Either form, we really can't come with an answer, but we can either put subcommittees together, we could put one of the bullet points at every meeting and discuss it in length. There's various ways to do that, so it's really our meeting, and so I'd like to kind of go around the room and see what you would like to, how you would like to conduct it, and do you have a set of goals? Would you like me to be up there and facilitate it? How would you like to do it? Ron?
My understanding of strategic planning is it is a hierarchical process, and it starts at the, pick your elevation, let's just say 30,000-foot level, and establishes goals. It's also, in my experience, important that, that it be framed in terms of time. So I would encourage the board to think in terms of a one-year planning horizon for this particular activity, or six months. I happen to think that, given that we meet once a month and that it's a relatively protracted process, that, that a year would, might be an appropriate goal, two might be an appropriate goal, a frame, I'm sorry, framework, to establish some goals. I do think that the Harbor Advisory Board's strategic plan, as you said, Mr. Chair, needs to incorporate, to the extent that they relate to the harbor, the city's published goals, and the Harbor Director has attached them to the agenda, so we've all seen them. I also think, and I'll wrap this up myself, I also think that it is, while it is important to start with goals, identifying goals, the fewer, the better, for the, for the timeframe, the more relevant they are, to state the obvious, the better. But they also need to have objectives, the next tier down in the hierarchy are objectives to, to execute those goals, to realize those goals. An action plan, if you will, is, is how I look at objectives. So that's, and I, I would love to have you facilitate, the board, I think that would be very useful. And what you might do, if you think it's appropriate, Mr. Chair, is after you go around and get the overview from each of the board members, is, is go back around again and ask them to identify what they think is an appropriate goal for the Harbor Advisory Board.
Thank you, Ron. Neil?
Yeah, I agree with that. I like the idea of going around and, and giving goals up. I think using this as a framework to start, so that it's pertinent to what the city's already interested in looking at, if we can facilitate helping in that way. I mean, this is pretty broad, and not every topic's gonna directly affect the harbor, of which we're offering advice on, but I think there's enough areas in there that, that we can expand on possibly. And like Ron said, I think keeping the goals limited, we can always, in the future, add future agenda items, so if something doesn't make on this list, it doesn't mean that it won't ever come up again. But we can hit the, hit the top five, or whatever number we determine is the, possibly the most pertinent goals.
So do you feel that the timeframe, you know, given the way it, government works, or it seems to work, that a year is, is appropriate, or should that be, or is that, that's how we should set our sights?
Yeah, I think that it should be, you know, with any goal setting, you have short-term and long-term goals, I think we shouldn't go too far out. I would, I'd say a year would be fair, and there might be some other stuff that might be a little more time-sensitive. Just for example, budgetary issues, if the city's planning on making plans sooner than a year, then we need to, it's not just a year out, it's encapsulated in that year. There's gonna be goals that have shorter windows that need to get addressed sooner, so we might prioritize, prioritize goals based on a schedule of such.
Okay.
Okay.
Dana?
Yeah, I think that, you know, if you wanna just go up to the chalkboard and go around the board, maybe not right now, but, and then just ask for some specific goals, and we'll see if we have overlapping, or we can expand on some of these that are already in the agenda, the attachment here. The year, I think that's fine, we can, we'll either be saying, oh, this is where we are, the status, or we'll, or this didn't work, or whatever, we can just give that status if we accomplish things, that's great, either way.
Okay, Dana. Lynn?
Yeah, regarding the, the year, we might have some goals that will go much longer than that, and then have interim goals, but some of these will also relate to other city activities, and we might be limited in that, and I'm not sure how that, those would fit in, and how we could set interim goals when the city and city council will have so much, may have so much to do with what we are doing and how we accomplish it. Excuse me. So that's one point that I'm just kind of unclear on.
So, explain that, I don't quite understand. In other words, what, the city might have other priorities that don't relate to harbor?
As an example, the Hall Out Yard, which I'm sure will be included, because that's very high on our list as the Harbor Advisory Board, that's a very long-term project, and the city will have a lot to do with how that progresses. So how we establish some goals to work for, to forward that project, and how we establish those goals and set a timeframe when they are so dependent on the city council's decision. Obviously, goals are set, and they are not necessarily always met, but they still remain the goal.
Well, yeah, and, and you're actually right, you know, we are an advisory board, but one of the things that we can do is we also can be a proactive board, and that's another reason why I think this is a good tool to do, is let's get our thoughts in, in place, and figure out a way of trying to achieve some of these things, and get the city's help to do it, too. Jean?
I'm not a big favor of, of setting lots of goals, I'm more of a practical guy, I'd like to see more objectives. Some long-term goals are fine, I'd just rather focus in on short-term goals and, and some objectives that can, we can readily have happen. I'm just tired of, of goals that sit on papers and books and sit on shelves, and they never happen. I'd like to see something actually happen. I'm more in favor of objectives than I am goals.
Point well taken. Alan? You have your head on, in this at all?
Well-
Not really?
After having been gone all summer, I am a little out of the loop here. Would you like to hear a couple of goals that are on my mind, or are we not there yet?
No, I think we're there, there, we've, we've talked, so what I'll do now is kind of get up and kind of write down some goals of each member, see if we can merge them together, and we can put together a list of five or six that maybe are doable, that we can try to achieve, as Jean said. I'm definitely in agreement of that, too.
Yeah, Alan?
Well, I wanted to refer to the Fisheries Community Sustainability Report, just, they had a number of goals there. Speaking for the Commercial Fishermen's Organization, the two most important things would be the boatyard, any progress towards that, maybe a commitment from the city to actually, you know, really get on the horse and ride it, so to speak. And the other thing was the sell-off the boat, I, I don't know how that's worked out, they had a temporary-
We actually voted to make it permanent.
Hot the tidlands?
I believe so.
Public docks.
Public docks.
Okay.
Yeah. It hasn't been utilized as much, but-
That's, that's right.
That's, that's where you folks play in to view, but-
Well, okay, and the, the other part of that, though, I guess the only thing that we can put under that is that maybe getting the recognition of it out there somehow, some kind, you know, some kind of advertising for that, that that's going on. Get people on both sides, sellers and buyers, aware of-
Off-sale fish sales, basically.
Off-boat fish sales.
Off-boat. Okay.
Personally, I would like to see the city create a program where they build a boat, and then the youth of the city row the boat up and down the bay, Viking ship or something like that, but that's a-
What was that?
I've always wanted to see a rowing club in Moro Bay. It's been like, like a personal thing I've always been interested in, where you have a, a big boat with multiple rowing stations, and a parks and rec, you know, somebody, that's just my-
You've been out to sea too long, Alan.
I love boats, that's all.
Okay.
Jean, do you have a couple goals?
Yeah, one of my longstanding goals, and I hope it's an objective, is a marine research facility for, for City Moro Bay. I've been advocating that for 25 years at least. Maybe-
Well, there, there, you know, there is an RFP going out right now for the old aquarium that is being put together by the city, by Cal Poly, by the-
Oh, I'm aware of it.
You're aware of it, and that's probably gonna be, you know, and the, the grandos plans is, and I've seen it, three stories, to be able to have education, to be able to have, you know, it's really, it's, it's there now. I mean, if we, as the Harbor Advisory Board, could get by that, or behind it, or help it along, I think it could be something that could happen.
Another idea, if I thought about it, would be cold storage for the commercial fishermen. I don't know whether that would work, but I think it's a good idea.
Cold storage and marine research facility. Lynn?
I think the most important thing that we could ever talk about is the Hall Out Yard.
Okay, well, we have that up here. Is there anything else? Okay. Dana?
Yeah, just going through the document that's in our packet here, under Goal Number Six, Support Economic Development. Six E is the Marine Services Facility, which that includes the haul-out and storage. So we've already got that up there, Boatyard. H is Projects, Continue Forward Momentum on Various Projects, including Maritime Museum, which is steaming along nicely, Marine Research Center, Aquarium, Coast Guard Facility, and Tide Lend's Park Fish Cleaning. So those are in that study. Also, Goal Seven, which is Improve City Infrastructure Facilities and Public Spaces, City Property, Research and Bring to Council for Consideration, Best Future Use of All City Properties. I think this goes right along with Boatyard, being that there is no new waterfront growing in our, in our city, and we have an industrial site, and then across the street, we have a measured D area, and we are working on that. We're gonna meet with RRM on the 13th of November, so that's, I think that's in process. Goal Eight, Enhance Quality of Life. C is Funding of Non-City Events, Develop and Bring to Council for Approval Policies, Procedures, Whatever. But non-city events happen all the time through the yacht club, I know. We have a lot of races, we, we put one on for the Harbor Fest, we actually put together a trophy and went up on stage, and we're a water bay, an actual bay event that happened during the Harbor Fest, or Harbor Event. So that was progress in that area. But I think we could do a lot more. I know I've, I've talked to people that would love to come here for, to do regattas, class racing, One Design fleets, that would come here, you'd have a lot of out-of-towners that stay in hotels, they would eat at the restaurants, they would spend money, they wouldn't just be buying T-shirts, and if they had a way to get in and out of the water with their sailboats, with, with this marine facility and a hoist on the dock, on the pier, just like Santa Barbara, or Santa Cruz, or anybody else but Moro Bay, then we could be facilitating that type of thing. And then 10 is Improve City Operations, and the last one on that is H, which is Grants. Well, we have some ideas, we're looking for locations and trying to get things planted so that we can go after grants. So I think that's, that's my start.
So basically, you're really still, you feel our number one goal and our number one priority should be the Boatyard?
Well, I think if we're looking at, we're talking about infrastructure for a harbor, and we are a harbor town, the only one in this county, we need to think about, the Hall Out and the Marine Facility would be the hub for the whole industry in our city for anything harbor-related, you know, boat, boat-related, for our boating community. And I think that's a good place to start, yes.
Okay. Neil?
So these are in no particular order, and there's, I think these things are important, too, so just because I don't mention it, it's already been mentioned, so. The area that talks about ensure fiscal sustainability, and this document also talks about transparency, the management partners, research and implement, or bring to council for adoption or rejection, all management partners' recommendations. I think that we have, our Financial Ad-Hoc Committee still has a little bit of responsibility to understand the current management partner's research paper. I think there's, there could be a discussion of if there was some gross oversights, if there's some credits owed back to the harbor, and if not, at least understand what was put where and why, so then when we do have a new report, we're up to speed with the rationale. So essentially-
Now, the management partners' report, just to clarify, is different than the cost allocation report that-
Oh, man, and I, I'm talking cost allocation report.
Okay.
You know, I, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the management partners' report, yeah, we have the small section, I apologize.
Okay, that's okay, all right, now I understand now.
Yeah, so, but I'm speaking about the cost allocation-
And, and you're absolutely right, so as a, as something, still as a fiscal, we need to put that down as a goal, to continue that process, and to figure that out and see, and making sure that they're allocating certain costs.
So with that, there's, this is somewhat related, and that is an assessment of what resources and/or facilities specifically are under the harbor's area of management. Because I, I know often there's certain things that are taken care of by the city-
Resource inventory, I mean, slips and-
Yeah, like, yeah. Just clearly defined, like, this dock is to be managed by the Harbor Department, this piece of the street is gonna be taken care of by the city, these streetlights are taken care of by the Harbor Department, these are by the city, you just have a real defined zone, so there's no question on the budget of, of what gets allocated to what budget, sub-budget, I guess you'd say, for the different zones.
All right.
And then maximization of city property, those leases, I know there's, for example, on the waterfront, there's a lease at the very end of the harbor that still exists, but has zero development on it, it's just down right past the-
Associated Pacific, and where those two little houses are, yeah, right.
So it's just hanging out.
We did go in an RFP on that once, and I don't believe anyone.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I don't think there's, it's difficult to have any utilization on that, but-
We'll find a way.
Yeah.
Water Reclamation of Stormwater Runoff. So we have an El Nino year coming, and there's gonna be a lot of runoff with that, there's pollution, but there's also the potential to store some of this massive amount of rain, because next year might not have as much of a rainfall. Cities like Cambria have done a great job, and they've gotten national recognition for cutting back on water use over 40%, and it'd be great if Moro Bay, and I see in here that they would like to get involved with water reclamation, but maybe not necessarily stormwater. You know, we have point source pollution that occurs down on the waterfront, and I'm not saying it would be easy to reclaim it, but there could be a method, if it was looked into, for maybe grabbing up some of the water that falls on our streets.
Well, that was one of the things that was brought up again on this eelgrass study, in the sense is that if we have to mitigate, mitigate, because the eel grass is, is, you know, diminishing tremendously, trying to do some of the storm drain mitigation, and trying to catch some of that, and, and to analyze it, especially in the back bay, that's something to really look at. I mean, eel grass, I, I feel, is on a point here that needs to be brought in.
That's my next point.
Okay, which I think that would tie in, too.
Right, I agree with that. So, eel grass is my next topic, possibly an ad hoc committee, as we've discussed at our last meeting, to look into aiding the eel grass mitigation. There could be some pilot programs going on currently in Malibu that we could look at, and looking at the potential benefit for all the waterfront leaseholders and facilities that the city owns on the waterfront, to offset the expensive cost of doing their own private eel grass mitigation. There's currently one leaseholder that I won't name, that's going through a six-figure-
Oh, yeah.
Study, he hasn't planted a single blade of grass for mitigation, and the money's just gone into the study, so-
Right.
I think there's an important area there that's been overlooked, so.
Well, I think it's more and more that, that, that something needs to be done, and I know we've had some conversations with the NAP, Ron has actually chatted with, with the Director, so maybe he has some insight in that, but I definitely think it's a goal that needs to be looked at, and somehow trying to get a handle on that. Anything else? Ron?
My perspective on this process starts with, my understanding of this body being an advisory board that focuses on the Moro Bay Harbor, which has lots of sub-working parts as well, but it's an advisory body. So to the extent that that's true- So to the extent that that's true, while I absolutely understand and support Gene wanting to move directly to action, I completely understand and support that. Some of these issues might be best acted on if the board had a good understanding. And maybe it does, and one or more of us have a good understanding of some of these rather complex issues. So I have a little different approach to it. Insofar as the eelgrass, what I would suggest as a goal, as a near-term goal, near-term meaning we've already defined that as a year, or less, is for this body, however they choose to go about it, to achieve a working understanding of how eelgrass affects the maintenance and economic development of the harbor waterfront. That's a global issue. It's not just one lease spot or one bed, or not just runoff, or whatever it is. All those things are involved. The next one that I would suggest is to achieve a working understanding of National Marine Sanctuary Act. I think that we can anticipate that the council would like this body to become well-informed about the National Marine Sanctuary Act. That's probably a longer-term goal, but I mean, you could, that's an elephant, but you can bite off a piece, a couple of big pieces in a year. Additionally, determine how best the Harbor Advisory Board can contribute to the goals and/or operation of the Harbor Enterprise Zone. We've nibbled around the edges of that from time to time during my time on the board, but it might be useful to, for the board to dedicate itself to a long-term goal, to determining how best it can support the Harbor Enterprise Zone. And then, lastly, support the Harbor Department in its budgetary activities. Now, we already do that, and we have a committee to do that, but I think that's an appropriate goal as well, to establish that as a as a long-term goal. And by the way, supporting the Harbor Department in its budgetary activities meets the city's goal and objective number five, as it relates to Five C, Capital Replacement. And determining how best the Harbor Advisory Board can contribute to the goals and operation of the Harbor Enterprise Zone addresses the city's goal number Six B, which is Economic Development Strategic Plan, as it relates to the harbor and the waterfront environs.
Okay? Yeah?
I thought Ron's idea of understanding the marine sanctuary is a worthy goal that should be up on the board.
The marine sanctuary, yes. That's definitely going to be in our bailiwick. I think that if you saw what happened at the City Council, they're misinformed and uninformed. And I think they're going to look to us, and if we have some knowledge and some expertise, I think that that will only be helpful to the city, that's that they can make some, you know, recommendations and some thought processes. So I definitely think that. I don't think I spelt that right, but I think you guys know what that is. There's a D in there somewhere. I'm not the best speller. Is that okay?
Only one R.
All right, you know what that is.
Just getting it.
I think the one goal, and again, I know that it's maybe a goal that we cannot control, but it does, you know, you look at the harbor, but you look at the infrastructure. You look at it, and I keep going on and on about this. You look at the dredging, you look at the bulkheads going into the bay. Is there anything that we, as a Harbor Advisory Board, can help facilitate some of that? In other words, can we do anything to help the new owners at the Inupi Morro Bay get in some negotiations with the harbor? I mean, I'm sure that they're already doing that. I mean, is there anything that we can do as a Harbor Advisory Board to help that process along? And that's a question I ask. I don't know if that is even a feasible goal. I don't want to put it up there unless anyone feels that it is. Gene?
Well, it sounds like you're looking at a specific solution in the goal set, which is fine with me. Yeah, there are several downstream discharge, drain systems, filtering systems that are required to be put in on new construction right now. So that would help on any discharge of pollutants coming in off of that area there. And how you negotiate with that lease site with the inn, I'm not really sure. That's between Eric and the owners.
Is that something that we should put as a goal, or just something that we should, I mean, as a highlight, so that we can have a one-year? You know, we want to have some negotiations. Now, I don't think they have to really enter any negotiations if they don't want, but I think that they would be foolish, because their parking lot is starting to, you know, crumble, too. And so-
Well, it's a complicated issue, because they've got all the eelgrass right out front, one of the few remaining beds. So they really have no, probably no desire to go out and put a marina in front of there and destroy the eelgrass. So it's not as easy as just saving the parking lot.
So that's a waste of our energy, you're saying?
At this point now, I think so, yeah.
All right.
Well, take it to the 30,000-foot level instead of the 1,000-foot level. The issue of infrastructure.
Right, and that's what I-
So what would, so how would we characterize, hypothetically, how would we characterize a goal for the Harbor Advisory Board as it relates to some sort of useful involvement in harbor infrastructure?
I don't have an answer for that, but I definitely, you know, this is one thing that you brought to my attention when you got on the board, Ron, is the capitalization, making sure that we're aware of replacement of our slips, our lease sites, and making sure they're maintained. You know, again, the same old thing I go, if we get dredging money in two years for the Back Bay and actually can dredge it all the way up to the channel, is it something that we really, really need to do so that we can try to mitigate and get some dredging done underneath those slips? I mean, this will be the only opportunity, probably, is in a two-year window. I mean, is that something that the Harbor Advisory Board should tackle? Or is it just beyond our scope? Which is an infrastructure thing. We will lose 118 slips in 15 years, probably. So that's what I ask. Gene?
Okay, so now we're talking about the State Park.
Well, that's another one. I mean, you know, I can go on and on.
You talked about 118 slips. I'm just trying to figure out where you're at.
Yeah, the State Park, yeah. That's another infrastructure.
I think that the Harbor Advisory Board can recommend to the council to encourage lease site owners to develop their lease sites to their fullest potential. But that's about as far as I think we can really go. There are lots of lease sites up and down in Barquadero that they have no desire or no need to develop at this time. And there's no reason why. Financially, they don't gain anything. So all I can do is ask the council to encourage people to look further on than the end of their lease site, I assume, so.
Yeah, Neil?
So, you know, as time goes on, I'm sure we'll hit another topic that's just on par with what we're talking about now. I think, as Ron was saying, going up to 30,000 feet, if we just looked at resource documentation, like as I was talking about, and then maximizing those, we can isolate out of, okay, what's the harbor's responsibility? What are our assets? And then what's being maximized, what's not? If it's not, how can we come up with a general plan to induce the maximization of those parcels? You can't force anybody who owns a business, obviously, to do something they don't want to do.
Right.
But you could encourage them or lower barriers, as with the eelgrass plan I'm talking about. There could be ways to, at a higher level, you know, instead of just focusing on one at a time, just-
So the higher level, the $30,000 level, or 30,000-feet level, would be a Harbor Master Plan, which we have, which is dated, what, 1980?
Unfortunately, the Harbor Master Plan deals with nothing on the water, with just the shore side. I was on it.
So I asked the $30,000, you know, question. Is that something that we, as a Harbor Advisory Board, should be pushing as to actually develop a current harbor harbor waterfront plan? As being the general. I know you don't like generals, and you don't like something that we might not, that might be a longer-term goal, but I think that's something that would encompass a lot of things and highlight a lot of things.
Yeah, but nothing will get done. I mean, I'm all in favor of the big goals, but I'd like to see things accomplished. I think Ron's idea of the 30,000-foot level is a great overview, and we can present that. But let's see if we can get into specifics after we come up with a $30,000, $30,000-foot level plan. Quickly.
Okay.
Bill, I'm gonna-
So, okay, so I won't put down a Harbor Master Plan then. Okay.
I like the $30,000 thing. I mean, that's working pretty well if we can come up with that. No, I'm, so I'm gonna, if you don't mind if I, I'm gonna jump in here. And this, obviously, this workshop, it's free-flowing. It's not like a standard meeting, so we're able to just kind of go around freely here. I had intended, you know, in my staff report here, to kind of lay some groundwork and maybe suggest some ideas way forward, but now it looks like we're kind of going backwards to the way I thought it would go, which is fine. So my suggestion here would be identify a list of goals, plans, objectives, or, goals, I want to go objectives, that's a different layer, like Ron says, if you're going down a little bit closer. What are the things we want to address? And then look at those individual things one at a time and figure out what our goals are with those. And if it's eelgrass, I mean, some of them relate to the city's goals and objectives. As Dana was saying, with some of the Boat Yard and other things, he pointed out a bunch of different things that they mesh into the city's goals and objectives. And come up with the ones we want to look at, and if it's a list of 10, 8, 12, whatever it is, then figure out where those fit, where they go, if they're a city goal and objective. Then figure out sort of the plan for the plan. How do we want to address this? If it's the economic development, how do we want to address the economic development city goal? Well, the Boat Yard, for some reason, my fish cleaning station got an economic development. I'm not quite sure why it's there, but it's where it is. How does the Harbor Advisory Board want to address those and assist those and implement those? And it may be forming an ad hoc committee. It may be, you know, lobbying certain other governmental agencies for permit stuff. It may be all sorts of different things that the HAB can do. And those would be the objectives that Ron's looking for. You know, what are the specific things we want to do to try and meet that goal?
Well, for instance, let me give you a good example. The Boat Launch Master Plan, that we tried to get a grant for what, 1.75 million, if my memory serves me correct, that was denied. Is there anything that this body can do to try to make that happen? I know that you reapplied. Is that all that we can do to try to facilitate, to have the Department of Parks and Recreation now make a decision to allocate that money, which would also entail having the fish cleaning station revamped? That's the question I ask. I mean, I don't want to put a goal down, as Gene says, that'd never get achieved.
Yeah, those are the objectives you're talking about. How do we meet that objective?
So my question is, is that, should that be a goal? As a Harbor Advisory Board, to try to make sure that we get the grant to upgrade the facilities at the Boat Launch area? I mean, that's a question I ask you, Eric, and the rest of the board. Yeah, Dana?
Well, yeah, kind of just backing up a little bit. We were just at the 30,000-foot level, looking at overall master plan. And I think one thing that we could take out of that, that we could actually do, it might be a piece of paper, but I think it would be valuable for future development. And it would be like a survey of underutilized areas in the harbor, whether they're leases or public or private areas, and just see what kinds of things might be able to be done in those areas. And then, like you're talking about the Inupi Morro Bay, well, they probably don't know what to do with it. They're just worried about making sure their bar sales are good right now and pay for their remodel. So they're probably not really looking at that right now, because they're not looking at it as money generating. So that would be one thing that could kind of maybe bring that from 30,000 a little bit down closer to sea level, would just be like a survey of areas in the harbor that could be, you know, with some ideas of development.
Okay. Ron?
I think we need to be careful not to operate in a vacuum. The city tells us that it has made a substantial commitment, currently is making a substantial commitment to the concept of economic development. Not only that, it has dedicated personnel for the purpose. So while this body or individuals in this body may be the best qualified to identify potentials in the harbor area, one way to do that is for this body or a representative or representatives of this body to meet with the Economic Development Officer. Develop our ideas, meet with that person, give them their ideas, and then we move on to things that are maybe a little more our bailiwick. I'm not saying, and I'm not saying the harbor's not our bailiwick. I'm talking about the global concept of economic development for the city of Morro Bay.
Well, that's a good idea.
And there's the Planning Department is working on things. And then there's a general plan, which, I sort of share Gene's feelings about that, but there's a general plan that's being revised. I mean, that's going to happen, and it includes the harbor by definition. I would like us to take something that Eric just said to heart, which is he spent some time thinking about how this might work best for us, which we may or may not agree with. But if you look at his discussion and his staff report, one of his statements is, "This process typically starts with a review of critical issues." And we might want to circle back to what we think are the critical issues. We have, this was great. This is everybody's ideas. This is exactly the way it should start, I think. But we might want to circle back now and say, okay, which one of those, within the timeframe that we've talked about, do we feel are the most critical? And then decide what we're going to do about that.
So I get a vote to put some goals down, and I think dredging is one of them. Does anyone, does anyone agree? You know, Lynn brought up an interesting point one meeting, that through environmental watchdogs, it's getting harder and harder to dredge in this bay. With this eelgrass issue, is that going to even get harder to dredge, especially in the Back Bay, if we do get the money to go all the way back to the channel? I mean, I would think that that's a highly multiple issue, but I'm going to put that down if no one else feels that it is. So be it.
No, no, no. So help me understand, what would the Harbor Advisory Board do to contribute to that issue?
Well, one of them is, there is a 363-page EIR that was put together for the Back Bay Marina to dredge wow to dredge the slips back there, for instance. If we do get the Corps of Engineers money to go all the way back to the Back Bay, one of the things that we did, the people- we did, the people that were on the board beforehand when we did it, and I think 2010, there was an opportunity, when we had the barge back there, to just take some silt underneath the slips and dump it there and do it like we do offshore, everything else. But we couldn't do that because of the toxicity supposedly. There has been some things done that have allowed that type of soil to be offshore dumped, as opposed to dumped by a dump truck. So, maybe that's another study that we can look into, if that does happen. I don't know. But I think it would be a lost opportunity if we did get the 7.5 million, which is, I think, gonna be in two years. Is that correct, Eric? Not next year, but the year after, right?
Yeah, we're shooting for FYI, yeah. 17, no.
That this is, you know, this is a planning session that, if that does happen, we have to be ready and, you know, that's just my thought. I'm looking at it in that respect. So, that's why I want to put dredging up there. And dredging is the, is the light bulb of our harbor. I mean, if we don't get that dredged every year, we've always had the opportunity to do it. But, and Eric would know this more than I would, but it's harder and harder. Now, as long as the Coast Guard's here, which is another issue, I'd like to put the Coast Guard up here as a, a goal. Is there anything, again, that the Harbor Advisory Board can do to get some type of decision made on this Coast Guard facility? Or is that just a moot point, too? That's just government hurry up and then wait, and then nothing happens? I don't know. So, those are the things that I'd like to kind of take a look at. I think that if we lost the opportunity to do a Coast Guard facility, and they happen to even go somewhere else, and if we lost the opportunity to maximize our dredging, you know, those are two tremendous losses that I don't know if we could handle in our harbor. So, I'd like to put those up there. So, Ron, as you say, we want to circle back. Explain that concept to my limited brain power.
Don't, don't, don't say that. It's not true in the first place, so.
I'm just a humble man.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We all are humble men, yeah. Or, and women.
And women.
Is there any utility in going through this list and prioritizing them in terms of criticality?
Yeah, I think so. The last thing I'd like to add is that, you know, and again, it's something that's gonna be brought up. It hasn't been brought up. It's not a top priority, and maybe it will never be. But management partners, they're, the city is following the management partners study that was just done to its teeth, if they want to. And the Harbor Department reorg or reassignment of certain personnel and activities are in that. Do we discuss it?
So, Bill, I think I would say, we went around the table and all put our list of what we thought were, were priorities up on the board. And I think if you have, you know, any more that, items that you yourself want up there, I think you should just put them all up there now, and then we can just...
Okay, that's, that's enough for me. Alan?
Ron said something about becoming more informed, and I wonder if we should, or if we could, if there's some way that we could meet and have speakers come, or something just in private, so that we could learn more about some of these issues, or if we could, you know, I realize I don't know anything about a lot of these things, and...
So, that's, that's a, that's a good point. I mean, is it something that we, as a Harvard Advisory Board, Eric, can call up NOAA, invite whoever in the Western Region Office, and have a meeting with, with us? Without being it public, without being it, or is it, is that? Oh. Well, what happens if we do it as individual citizens? Huh?
More than three of us can't discuss.
Yeah, as soon as you have, as soon as you have four more in any one room, at that point, your discussion cannot occur because now you've got a, unless it's a publicly noticed meeting with all the other stuff, you're just, your bump's on a log at that point.
But, but the concept, it's a quality concept.
I'm not talking about discussing. I'm talking about just listening.
We understand. I understand, and that's a quality, and that's a quality concept.
I mean, we gotta...
But there's absolutely no reason why, once we decide what's important to us as a body and to the city, what's important to us, there's absolutely no reason for us not to agendize obtaining that information and getting a resource and to provide it to us.
Yeah, if you're gonna plan something...
There's no reason not to do that.
And bring somebody in, whether it's NOAA or whatever, for whatever the topic is. If you're gonna bring us, an expert or a speaker or whatever, and you might as well agendize it. That way, you can discuss it.
Bring him to a regular Harbor Advisory Board meeting.
Yeah, and I hate to say special meeting again, because I'm kind of dumb with those, but you could certainly agendize it, or do it to have to be a special meeting. It can be a study session or an informational item, but you agendize it and get it on an agenda and publicly notice it. Then you can discuss it and ask questions and have back and forth. Otherwise, yeah, you can just sit there. But I challenge all of you to sit there in some informational item where you're wanting to get information, where you're just gonna sit there and not want to get in discussion, because you're gonna want to have questions. So, you might as well allow for that.
Well, so, I was thinking, is just education...
Well, I think education is gonna fall underneath whatever we do pick here. You know, I mean, a good example, if we picked the boatyard, how, the boatyard facility is being our number one. Ron is the chairman of that marine facility. You know, my question is, is to raise the hand. Did travel lift? Did anyone, did they come in and talk to anyone when they were here? They were supposedly here in Morro Bay. Do we know the answer to that? You know, I mean, I'm, well, so my, my point being is that, what was my point? I'm sorry. The thing is, is that I think we, you know, is the marine boat haul-out facility our number one? Is there recognition? So, let's go back over and see. Yes, Dana?
I was thinking that what we could do is, we could each just write down in our own order, like, say, you know, number five is your top one, or number one is your top one. Just make a, just list it that way, and then you can just ask us where we're at, and then you'll have kind of a count. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, before we go further down that road, we've roundtabled a few times. Are these, a couple of questions here. One, are these the main things that the HAB wants to just throw up there? And if so, I think it's a useful exercise that we go through the city's goals and objectives and see, and I've got a fair number of them that are circled that are kind of harbor-specific, and see if there's anything else. Oh, yeah, we need to add that on there. And again, my suggestion would be then go down each of the, I guess prioritize, see what's the highest priority for us, the next thing we're just planning on doing here. And then go back to the city's goals, see where they fit in, you know, because a lot of these are gonna fit into the city's goals. In fact, we already spoke about that a fair amount. See where they fit into the city's goals. Hopefully, they do. The council's goals, I should say. And if and when they do fit in, then the, the, the objective parts become, okay, we agree with the boatyard facility, and that goes in the economic development, city council goal, number, whatever the economic development one is. And then, what do we want to do to facilitate that? Well, as, you know, Alan spoke, we need, and we're moving towards that, we need the council, we need the city to commit to a site and keep moving forward and financially commit to it. Those become the objectives, so I'm just trying to structure something forward, so we're not, I mean, there's a great free-form process here, but we've got to get a structure at some point to where we, we know what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Okay. So, Eric, do you think there's anything that we need to add to this list up here?
Well, I'm just gonna go through the city's goals and objectives real quick. Goal one, water reclamation facility. Yeah, it's got water, but it's not saltwater. Hopefully, won't be discharging there anymore. Improved streets, yeah, the Embarcadero's got a street, but that's not really a major harbor thing. Goal three, review and update significant land use plans. We spoke about this earlier, general plan, local coastal plan. Obviously, the, we're gonna have something to say about that and how all that works with all the different specific land use areas, waterfront being one of them, that that's gonna incorporate. Goal four, maintain core public safety services. Code enforcement, that's more of an operational thing. I don't know what the HAB can bring to that. Emergency plan updates, nothing really the HAB to bring to that. Goal five, ensure fiscal sustainability, budget process. We already have our committee that's been helping me with capital and now budget stuff and the cost allocation, so that feeds into there. Financial reporting and oversight, I've kind of already sold that committee to, to my bosses as sort of being our arm of the citizens' financial oversight committee that the city's currently doing with the general fund. So, we're feeding into that. Capital replacement, that's that committee again.
And what about budget management partners?
We're getting there. It's a couple down the line here. Fee recovery. We already did master fee schedule earlier this year. We addressed it again a couple council meetings ago. But that's kind of the financial committee again. Management partner study, research and implement, and bring the council for adoption or rejection. You know, the council is gonna, the city is gonna look at all those. So, obviously, we're gonna have something to say about that. There is currently a time schedule, rough time schedule, when we're gonna start looking at all those goals. All those harbor reorg ones are a little farther off right now, but there's something to keep on in our radar and be ready to plan to comment about. Goal six, support economic development leap. That process is already undergoing, as is the economic development strategic plan. We've just put out an RFP for that, for a consultant to come in and help us develop that plan. So, there may be some HAB feed into that, depending on how that plays out. Marine services facility, we've beaten that one to death. Obviously, we're gonna have something to say about the boatyard. And then, goal six H projects, the Marine Research Center Aquarium, Coast Guard Facility, and the biggest economic development project in the city, the Titans Park Fish Cleaning Station. Obviously, we're gonna have some input on that and the launch ramp, I'm just joking about that, the launch ramp project. So, some of our work here can feed into that. Improved city infrastructure facilities and public spaces, the Embarcadero Promenade. We've, RRM's contractor, consultant, under contract right now to develop some analysis of that and pilot and design to bring back to city council. So, I would suspect that's gonna have a run through the Harvard Advisory Board. I know that they're developing a list of stakeholders right now that's gonna include some of you folks, to start, RRM to start talking and to start working on that. So, there's a HAB element in that. Parking, obviously, the triangle lot with its potential for parking is gonna play into that, and we'll see how that goes with our study with the museum and the boatyard, maybe all fitting in that area. Needs assessment for police and harbor buildings, we're already underway with that. There's, at some point, our needs assessment, it is done by RRM. We're getting ready to try and figure out how to get that to council. That will kind of, I think, inform the Coast Guard process to a degree, because we need a bigger building, and Coast Guard wants to take over our site. So, we know what we need, where does it go? So, there's gonna be a HAB element to that. Enhanced quality of life, there's no real harbor-specific things in there. Improved water supply diversification, I think, was it you, Neil, that were talking about stormwater runoff? And maybe capturing some of that. There's, one of the main goals here is, you know, not just conserving water and the D-SAL plant and operating it, but conservation and groundwater improvements and state water and all sorts of other, hopefully, innovative ways to ensure we have a safe and reliable water supply. So, that feeds into that. And then, goal 10, improve city operations. That's really an operational thing. There's not a lot of HAB-type related things there. So, nothing else, I guess, going through that quick mental mine dump, really jumped out of there, back onto your board. So, I guess, are you all happy with what's up there, off of your individual lists? And then start drilling down on what the priorities are, and then see how they feed back in here, and then come up with some objectives on how to achieve what we want to achieve with those? May that make sense?
Eric, you zoomed right by the emergency plan update, but I just wanted to, and you said that it wasn't something we didn't want to get involved in, but I just wanted to say, the first thing that happened to me when I came home after being gone all summer was Tom Hafer said, we had a tsunami, everybody got called...
Right.
...by your department, so...
And you were gone!
And I was gone. I missed it. But I'm really happy that that goal got met. I don't know how it happened, but...
Well, it's because of you, Alan.
I don't, I don't know. I must have done it.
It was a discussion by you, and Eric took it upon himself to have volunteers in the office to call everyone that he was able to get a hold of. Becca was actually working 24 hours a day, was on call every two hours to the office of whatever management to monitor the tsunami, to assess the damage. So, we were on top of things while you were away.
That's magnificent.
But seriously speaking, you were the one that brought it up about a year ago, I believe, after, or, you know, after a year and a half, and we took it to heed to do something. And that's why it's important to have some input, because change can be made, as Gene knows, right? Every so often, yeah. Okay, so, as what Eric says, I think, do we need to add anything else up here? Gene?
You mentioned working waterfront. What does that entail?
Well, again, the vision of what Morro Bay is, is a working waterfront. And with that, yes, Eric? You know, with the working waterfront, it, you know, it's to make sure that we maintain the fishermen, the people that work on the waterfront, the, the whole concept of it. That, that's really what it means, because, you know, if we don't, you know, if the whole vision is kayakers, recreational boaters, regatta people, then, you know, we don't need this. We, you know? No. So, I just wanted to bring that out. And then, measure D, I've been talked by some people that they feel measure D is just a half-assed measure, and it's, it's not, I'm just, it should be re-looked at. That's all. And so, I just put, well, that's, all right. So, those are the two things that I wanted to just add down, since we're at this particular stage. So, Dana, utilizing your thing, do you just want to rate? And by all means, if you feel that only five or six is all we should have, because that's all we can handle for a year or so, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to bring out some of my thoughts, too. Doesn't necessarily mean that I still won't try to pursue them on my spare time.
Well, we could just, all just pick our top six and...
Well, the other, one thing that we can do, I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, I know it might not be, you can, everyone can come up here with a marker and just mark down, no? Just put it on a piece of paper? Okay. Okay, okay. So, Ron, I'll write them down. Now, are we gonna just go maybe the top five? Is that what someone wants, or the top 10, or? Okay. Okay.
So, score-wise, I'm trying to think.
We just quickly start from number one to 14 that we feel is...
Guys, let me have a suggestion. Go ahead and turn the microphones all on.
So, we just need a piece of paper?
A quick process by which we're not gonna have to spend an hour adding everybody's numbers up, trying to figure out where you're at.
Okay.
Raise that hand.
It...
Raise your hands.
The quickest way may be for each item, score it one to five.
What are we scoring? Desirability?
Desirability.
Timeframe?
Five, if you...
Are we scoring them with how well we can implement them within a year?
I object to the concept desirability, because it isn't what I want or what I don't want. To me, it's about criticality.
Well, criticality, highest priority, whatever you want to call it, yes.
One being the highest, or five being the highest?
Five's the highest. That way, the higher the number, the, higher the number a thing gets, the more...
I really think this would...
Go quickly. If everybody would just go ahead and rate one through 14, I'd be happy to go up there. Bill can take the pieces of paper, and go boom, 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 boom.
Okay, so we're ready?
I still have a question, though.
14?
Are we supposed to be considering the timeframe in our ranking? Or is, I mean, eliminate things that we can't possibly accomplish in a year, or? eliminate things that we can't possibly accomplish in a year, or?
Well, I think that's up to you.
I think that's up to you. If you think it's a five-year thing, maybe it's not such a high priority to you anymore.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think that we should try to, if we, I think we should try to see if we can accomplish some of these within a year.
Don't do all 14 if you wanna do all 14.
Let's see if we can.
Do six if you wanna do six, it just won't get scored, that's all.
So one through 14.
Okay.
With a one to five?
No, just one through 14. One's your highest priority, 14's your lowest. Just like you started. I wanna see Ron do this.
Not one being the highest or 14?
No, one being the highest.
I'm in your highest or so, the one.
Then you can just reverse math, and the one with the lowest score would be obviously the most critical one to everybody.
I'm just writing them in order, figuring out what you wanna do.
Gene?
It's the ones in the middle, Bill.
So the ones that you crossed out?
That's just me, that's just, just me keeping track of what was on the floor.
Okay, and then the ones?
The ones in the middle. And they're, and they're, and I just gave them to you in order, start at the top, work your way down whenever you're ready.
Okay, so you didn't go to 11, 12, 13, or 14? No, okay. Wow, okay. I don't think I did this right. Alright, Ron.
How many votes for one do you have?
Oh, do you want me to help count them?
Just write them, just say, just say number one, number one, number one, and I'll put a tick mark there, time to do that.
So how many times the boatyard was marked as number one? What if it was marked number five?
Then I'll work that up.
Four, and what's in your hand?
Five.
Five, and six.
She just knew what everybody voted on the boatyard.
Number one is six.
Okay, got it. Okay, number two?
There's only six of us here, so that was, oh.
Well, I just ranked all 14.
Right, no, I know, I know, you did it right. This is seven.
You're gonna have to make checkmarks for each one.
I can't even see how he does it.
Number one.
Yeah.
Then go to eight is number, is two.
Okay, no problem. Do you have a quick one to do this?
Seven is three. Five is four.
Is what?
It's the next one, so 10 gets a mark for seven.
Now I'm totally confused.
Well, no, if you...
Yeah, you did, yeah. I kinda went up to seven.
Oh, no, because I ranked all 14, everything will get a tick mark. That doesn't work either.
No, we get one through 14.
We got one through 14.
Some people didn't do that, that's a problem.
They did it.
They go back and forth and mark them and then have it all done.
So if somebody marked Marine Sanctuary as their least critical and put a number 14, Ron, you're gonna write a 14 next to Marine Sanctuary? Is that your methodology here?
I'm gonna write a 14.
Is that how your methodology is?
Well, what I was hoping was that the tally folks would be able to go, number one got X number ones and X number twos, and we'd only go down, I mean, however you wanna, however you wanna do it.
Okay, so if we take the top...
Probably set a goal.
If we take the top five numbers from each list.
Yes, ma'am. Or we could do it this way, we could just say, we could do, show of hands for what that's like, we could say, we can do a show of hands for the top six.
Yeah, let's just do that.
Can we take a five minute?
Let me see.
How did everybody write everything down?
I just squared my top five in order.
No, they didn't, and some didn't do all 14, so.
Right.
I just did my top five, so let's just go raise a hands. Yeah.
Or we take the top five?
Yeah.
So we're gonna do the top five?
We need your papers back? Is he just trying to do right?
No, I think you can figure it out.
I need my paper back.
I need my paper back.
May I make a suggestion?
Alan, is this your paper?
Whoever didn't put a ranking on all 14, you need to rank all 14, one through 14, whatever you would rank them at. So if number 12, management partners, is the first thing on your list, you're gonna mark that as number one.
Here's yours.
Okay, Ron, is that what you did?
Who's is that?
That's Alan.
If cold storage is your number three thing, you're gonna put three next to cold storage. Then we're gonna take a five-minute recess, because doing math in public is dangerous.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure somebody has to go potty, so we can take a little break. Here, give me that, Ron. Do you follow directions? You follow, you follow directions?
I'm gonna come back.
Do we just go to break, take the top five?
Five minutes, yeah. Hey, thank you. So the general consensus is that what we're gonna do is do the top six, and then we will go back into starting from one to six to see how we can achieve them. Is that correct? Does everyone agree? And the other ones will be?
Later.
Later, you know.
Future agenda items.
Yeah, future agenda items. So how you doing over there, Mr. Eric?
Almost done.
Okay. So does anyone else have anything else to say about anything?
I don't... Yeah, we are primarily an advisory body, so the thing that we really do is advise the city council on various topics. So we're gonna come up with a list of topics that we think are most important to this board. And then it seems to me that about the only thing we can do is to become, is to hone our arguments in favor of whatever action we would like the city council to take in order to be able to convince the city council to take that direction. And the example was the Marine Sanctuary, where they felt that we, we gave them a recommendation, but they didn't feel that they had sufficient argument to wholeheartedly follow that recommendation. We did not convince them all of our argument.
Well, I don't know if we convinced them, they didn't really make any decision.
They decided to not change.
So are you suggesting, Lynn, that for each one of these items, that the Harvard Advisory Board would adopt an advocacy position?
Well, in some ways, yeah.
As opposed to an advisory position, which is not the same thing? Advisory position, for instance, let's take the Marine Sanctuary Act. My concept of what the Harvard Advisory Board might do about that is it would educate itself, so it would be available as a resource.
Right.
Without regard to whether there should or should not be a particular sanctuary in a particular spot. That might come to us, that might come to us.
It seems to me that that is what comes to us. They ask our opinion on what we think they should do and why they should do it.
Okay.
On certain things. We can also be a proactive board.
We can, but, and we can be on any of these. But when it comes to what actions we can take, are, it seems that we're very limited in action because we're an advisory board. We can argue for one point of view or another. We can bring topics up and say, these are really important to the city, to the Harbor Advisory Board, to the Harbor Department, and therefore we think the city council ought to take these under advisement, that they ought to consider these important as well. So that is advocacy.
That's correct.
We are taking a position one way or the other on these topics.
And I think that, I met with our new advisory councilman on Monday, Lazion, for a couple hours, and he is a firm believer in proaction. He understands the dynamics that we are an advisory board, but if we can justify and feel that certain topics are of importance to the city, the economic development, we can bring it to him, and he will then try to make his other council people agree.
But that, that's where our action is limited, it seems to me.
No, it is, I mean, we, you're right.
We want to advise, and therefore what we need to be doing is to become very educated on these topics that we consider most important and be able to make our arguments very strong.
Correct.
Via the education, because we really know what we're talking about.
Correct. Well, we'll take in, we'll just say issue A and you take a position, and say it's supporting position A, or issue A, your advocacy becomes the Harvard Advisory Board's position, depending on how you craft it and how you word it.
Exactly.
There's certainly nothing to say the Harvard Advisory Board, through its actions and activities, can assist the council with other things that are not necessarily advisory. You know, if it, if you agree with, you know, a certain goal and an objective in the city council's goals, there's no reason the Harvard Advisory Board, through its various means, can't assist the city council in achieving that goal. It doesn't necessarily just have to say, yeah, we support it, or no, we don't support it, or we recommend you go this way or that way. They can, you can physically and logistically help out achieve that goal.
How?
Ad hoc committees gathering information?
Okay, I guess I...
Individual members that have lots of time on their hands can go out and do research or whatnot, lots of other things.
Well, a good example, we, Ron, myself, and Jeff, when he was on the board, we created an ad hoc committee, the Cost Allocation Budgetary Committee. We met with Susan Slaton at City Hall. We got her to actually change some of the cost allocations that are being taken out of the Harbor budget. We also got her to look at some other things, with Eric being there also, but we, as a pro advocacy, Ron, myself, and Neil now, made some changes. We took it upon ourselves to make this important and to put our time together to do this. The same thing we're doing with the boatyard facility. Once we get this master plan, we gotta figure out how to pay for it, and that's probably gonna be a task that the ad hoc committee's gonna do, and then we're gonna present this to the city council, and hopefully they'll give us our blessings. Yes, but, you know, there's no question that we're not gonna make any decisions. That's not our, that's not our bylaws, we don't have the authority or the decision, but if we give them...
We give them the information.
That's correct, and you're right. We are, if we're so knowledgeable, they're gonna come to us. They don't have the time to do this. Now, I happen to know that one of the reasons why John is our liaison, and hopefully Matt will come back, but if he, you know, right now, John is, he feels very strongly that the Harbor is an unexplored and a hidden jewel, and the number one jewel for economic development, and he feels that it's not being utilized properly. So I had a good conversation with him.
Hey, sure, doesn't put up a parking lot.
Well, yeah, you're right.
You gotta be careful not to do that.
Now, again, one of the things that I, as the chairman, since we're kinda still waiting, I explained a little bit more what Dana stated about the city manager and the city council being not in sync in their thought process, and some of the comments that Mr. Buckingham and I mentioned by name. And he defended them to a certain extent, because he says... And he defended them to a certain extent, because he says, "Dave has 85 priorities that has to be achieved, and that's what he's been allocated to do." And frankly, this is, that's probably not one of his top priorities.
Mr. Chair, is this on topic?
No, it's not.
We're on the record.
Oh, I understand. I haven't, I'm, I have nothing to hide.
Well, that's not the point.
Oh, apologize.
We're still tabulating?
Point is, we have, we have an agenda item.
Okay, well...
Which is strategic planning for the Harbor...
Well, I, I, I think...
I'll check my numbers.
I think that strategic planning, you know, one of the things is, and then I did mention this with John, and so he's in complete favor of what we're doing here. So, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I'll shut up.
One thing we do have to realize is, we are an advisory board to the city council. That does not necessarily mean staff is on our side all the time. There have been, in the past, advisory boards have made recommendations, and staff did not feel that way. And so, when that presentation was made to the council, it was presented both by staff recommendation and the advisory board council.
Which is a very healthy thing.
Yes.
Okay, survey says? Ready, wanna write these down?
Let me write down one to six.
Put a big red number next to whatever your rating is.
Number one.
Okay, so what I did is I totaled the numbers up, all your rankings, and the lowest number, obviously if everybody voted number one on something, have the lowest number, so therefore it's the highest priority. Makes sense? Okay. Number one with 26 points, Boat Yard. Number two with 38 total points, Eelgrass. Number three with 47 total points, Dredging. We have a three-way tie for four, at 48 points. Marine Research Facility.
So, this would be, would this be four?
That would be four, you're gonna write four down, four, three times.
Four A.
Yeah, four A, B, C, sure. Four B would be Enhanced Support Harbor Fund, Harbor Enterprise Fund, I think it's eight, yep, number eight. And the next one under that Sanctuary would be four C.
Okay. Number five?
Number five, we have a two...
We don't need five, we got six.
You don't need five.
Well, let's keep ranking, I'll just, just go down the rankings, how they turn, in case you wanna change something down the line. Two-way tie for five. Five A would be number two, Off the Boat Fish Sales. So, five A. Five B would be number five, the Cost Allocation Budget.
All right, and then one more, Eric, six.
Six is number 14, Measure D.
Okay. I think that's it, right now. Okay? So, you're gonna write these down, Eric, and so let's go back and have a little discussion on the Boat Yard Hallout Facility. Number one. Action Plan, Goals. As Dana stated, November 13, he's meeting with RRM. Is anyone else meeting?
Ad hoc.
Wait, wait a second, wait a second. We already have an action plan in place. The action plan is the ad hoc committee. So, so I think we, my personal opinion is that there is a sufficient action plan, if you will, for number, for priority number one.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, 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 actually, what Dana said is right on, so...
What'd he say?
He's letting the public know through this.
Yep.
And what that plan is, just for the sake of clarity is...
You're totally right, Bill.
Our consultant, we've hired RRM on the 13th, Friday the 13th. We're getting together, starting probably in our office in the morning with RRM and our ad hoc committee, and Maritime Museum, and folks from Community Development, and a couple others. Quick in-house discussion, then we're gonna go off to the site, to the Triangle Lot, and just walk around and just brainstorm things, get everybody's ideas, spend a couple hours out there, a couple, few hours out there, getting everybody's ideas, writing things down, and then everyone's gonna march off to San Luis Obispo, hopefully carpool, to some degree, to RRM's offices, and we're gonna have a working lunch there, and then continue on in their offices on the table, and start writing things down, and we'll rough things out, and do more brainstorming ideas, and start getting into the meat of it, and then mid-afternoon, call it a day, and then they'll spend the next couple days, next few days, formalizing it and drawing things up, and, you know, obviously we're putting our inputs from the Boat Yard criteria into all this, and they'll consider all that and come up with their drawings. Once we get that, assuming we come up with a couple different options, we'll be bringing that back to the Harbor Advisory Board, I think would be the most reasonable place to come with it first, and get Harbor Advisory Board's larger input on it, and see what the Harbor Advisory Board recommends, or advises, and then ship that off to the city council for next actions. So, until we know what that map looks like, we're not gonna have much more to go on.
Yes, Alan?
Someone was talking about grant, securing grants, this, that's something we could do along the lines, number one, to have a goal of trying to figure out some way to secure actively, look after every kind of grant that we could get, all the way down through the process.
Yeah. I mean, Alan, with your background in the fishing industry, maybe there's money out there that you know of that you can direct us to.
I'll ask around.
Okay. Number two is the Eelgrass, which, how do we wanna handle that? Ron?
How about if during, how about if we agendize for the next Harbor Advisory Board meeting, the establishment of a study committee?
I think it's a good idea. I think we need a lot more information on Eelgrass.
Populate that with three of the board members, and I'm looking at one of them right now, and who already nodded his head up and down the last time we talked about this, so...
Is that a preemptive to possibly an ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Well, that's up to the...
Right.
I think I'd leave that to the chair, if it, whether it's a study committee or an ad hoc committee. Adhocs are standing committees, so...
So, is, is this an appropriate time to, oh, we can't do anything today? Okay. All right, so let's do that.
You can identify that. And to, and to build on that, so, and I think I've brought this up at, at past Harbor Advisory Board meetings, we've talked about Eelgrass. And as you know, Newport Beach did a pretty comprehensive Eelgrass mitigation strategy within their bay, and that's what I foresee us eventually tackling and going after to see how we develop that sort of a plan, and that would be my, I would assume, kind of a next step for this in terms of Eelgrass, and how we see how it affects development and everything else.
Do we take a field trip to Newport?
Are you sure it's Newport?
Yeah, Newport, ever.
That's what they say, Neil, Newport. Well, we could, we could probably take a field...
I don't wanna go there.
All right, so, at the next meeting on November, I think it's the fourth, I believe, we'll ask for future agenda items, I believe, at that time, and then we will put together either a study session or an ad hoc committee, and allocate three people from our board to do that. Number three is dredging. So, every year, we've get our harbor dredged, and it's generally a set deal. We get the money, the Corps of Engineers come in, and they do mostly the harbor mouth. In 2010, we were able to get, I think, about $8 million at the time, and they actually dredged the whole bay to the Back Channel, almost to the entrance of the Back Bay Marina, I believe. I guess what we're doing is asking to get, in the 2006 year, just the dredging of the harbor mouth, and then in 2017, to have a full dredging. At that time, I would like to somehow come up with a plan in conjunction with the letter that you've already sent to state regarding the master lease in the Back Bay Marina. Some type of plan that we can help alleviate, and maybe see if we can get the Back Bay Marina dredged. So, I don't know how to approach it, but I, I definitely think it's a hot topic, it's something that the Harbor Advisory Board needs to be involved in. And I'm willing to, you know, put my time and effort into it, but I don't know how to go about doing it. So, I'm asking your help a little bit, Eric, and...
So, to me, I see that, so what's the, what can the Harbor Advisory Board do?
Yeah.
For dredging both the Army Corps of Engineers responsible dredging and our State Park Marina?
Right.
For the Army Corps, it's, a lot of this is gonna be advocacy, I think, in terms of what the, what the Harbor Advisory Board can do. In terms of, like I say, Army Corps of Engineers does our entrance and our channel periodically, entrance every year. We go back to Washington DC every year to advocate and lobby for that. We work through CMAN, the California Marine Affairs and Navigation Conference. We put together our trip to Washington DC every year. So, I would see the, the HAB's likely role in all that as a support and advocacy of, of our mission to, to ensure the Corps continues to come back and fund us.
I have a question.
Yeah, Alan.
Is the Army Corps of Engineers ever going to be involved in the dredging of the Back Bay Marina?
I seriously doubt it. It's not an authorized project. So, the way Corps dredges is it's gotta be congress, a congressionally authorized project. It's not currently congressionally authorized, and to get it congressionally authorized is an act of Congress. It's very unlikely that it would get authorized.
So, who would end up sponsoring that, paying for it?
You're looking at them. City Mor Bay.
And in order, in order to do that, you have to get a dump site?
Yeah, there's a lot of illness to, we'd have to...
Who controls that?
We got Department of Boating and Waterways funding for the dredging we did do back there, we got grant funding to do most of it.
Well, we, we could possibly help getting a dump site.
That's got a different elements to it. The Corps, regular Corps dredging is pretty standard. Like I said, I don't see a big role in the HAB there, except for support and advocacy. As far as the State Park Marina, unless, our, our, the financial problem, main financial problem with that is the cost of dredge material disposal in an upland site. The material's not contaminated, it's not toxic, it's, it's fine silting mud, which according to the current guidelines, is not suitable for the nearshore beach disposal.
So, we need an offshore?
We need either offshore, or get the regulatory agencies to, to bend on that and allow us to dispose of that in the nearshore, to make it cost-effective.
Can the Harbor Advisory Board...
Or slightly, or get a new disposal site, you know, one-time disposal site authorized further offshore, and that would probably be an EPA thing.
Can we do anything to make that happen?
Yeah, I hate to keep bringing up committees, ad hoc committees.
What did they do in Santa Cruz? And didn't they have a test project in Santa Cruz where they could, where they dumped some of the fines offshore?
There, it's in the beach, it's in the nearshore, and it's, it's, like you say, it's kind of a pilot program, and then it's still underway, but they did get a, I guess I call it a variance from the, from, it's an 80/20 rule, it's gotta be 80% compatible with the beach, they did get a variance from that. But that's a one-time thing, and we did too, when we did the dredging we did in the State Park Marina, it was about a 50/50 mix. And we convinced the regulatory agencies that, "Don't worry, the sand and mud's not gonna end up on the beach, it's gonna end up out offshore, where all the other mud always goes, 'cause that's just the way the dynamics of nature work, all that stuff goes out there." But we had to spend probably an extra, well, close to $100,000 on monitoring and testing to ensure that it didn't in fact show up on the beach, and it didn't. We tested the beach and sediments, and, I mean, and it was a very smooth, 30,000 cubic yards, and the Corps came along the next summer and dumped 300,000 cubic yards on top of it, so it was a small little quantity. So, what can the HAB do in terms of that? It's research and assistance on, on seeing if the regulatory agencies are, are willing to, to bend on that 80/20 rule, and getting some sort of a variance.
For the silk?
For the, yeah, for the, for the fine materials. Unless they're somewhere, you know, close by that we can get it to on land, that becomes a problem, it's, trucking costs just get ridiculous, and impacts, you know, air impacts with driving trucks back and forth makes no sense.
I think this came up last time we talked about this, and it was like, you know, if there's plenty of land really close to us, and no one's ever really brought that forward as an option. I mean, you know, if you got a truck going from here to some ranch property three miles away, that cost goes way down.
We look, you know, when we, when we had the, you know, back in, when we first started entering the operating agreement, we looked into that, we, and that, but I mean, that was a long time ago, granted, things have changed and property owners may have changed. We, we had tried to identify something within 10 miles, and there was nobody willing to accept it.
Oh.
We found somebody up above San Simi, and that was some ranch that was...
Wow.
Closest we could find. We tried some, yeah, so...
Well, I, I think that what can we do as HAB? We can keep this, it is a top-three priority, it seems like, for everyone in this room. We will be getting a new congressman, or, yeah, I believe, or, lowest caps will be gone next year. I think they're very helpful, and, you know, again, as private citizens, as members of the HAB, I mean, we can also advocate for that. So, but I think we should definitely, now, can we do anything to help facilitate state's decision on an increased lease, or a master lease, Eric? I mean, that's the question I have.
Bayside?
Yeah.
That's a...
Yeah, I mean, whole different topic, but, and that's under, that's underway, that's ongoing right now, we're currently pushing towards that, on, coming out of that, that meet, that HAB meeting we did have on the Bayside Cafe.
Well, I mean, I, it's not, it's not, but we would be foolish as a city to even consider dr, trying to dredge if we didn't have a hold of master lease on that place. That's why I, I say. I mean, if we don't get the master lease, we're not going to even consider dredging those slips, correct? I mean...
We currently, currently have an operating agreement, we don't have the master lease on the Bayside, we've, and we're concessionaire, concessionaire operating the Marina.
Right.
From a financial standpoint, it, just the Marina revenues don't add up to pay for dredging, so, several elements, that and local control trying to see if we can run the Bayside Cafe, RFP and concession, but that's, that's a whole different, there's a lot of elements going on there that, beyond just the dredging.
So, basically...
That we are currently working on.
There's nothing that we, as a HAB, can do.
At this point, no. I mean, a lot of these are just gonna be what the HAB is, it's advisory, making, giving advice and making recommendations to the city council and others. Primarily, obviously, the city council's who you really report to.
Yeah, Alan?
Well, we were talking about economic development, and somebody, at some point today, I don't know if it was in this meeting, was saying, you know, "What are the jewels of Mor Bay?" I think we can identify, you know, we could come forth with identifying that Back Bay Marina and the, and the, the cafe there as being one of those hidden jewels of Mor Bay, definitely worth doing something to preserve it and, and enhance it, would end up contributing to the economic viability of the city, you know, bottom line.
Okay.
It's an attraction.
No, I agree. All right, enough on that one. Number four A, Marine Research Facility. How can we help as a HAB to make Gene's dream and, and everyone else's dream tr, no, I mean, no, a vision? And I think it's a, it's a worthwhile vision. What, what can we do as a HAB to help facilitate that?
So, currently, as you know, with the Mor Bay Aquarium Site, you know, we put that out for RFP, and the RFP stipulated aquarium and/or marine research or education. We got no responses back, although the Avala Beach folks were interested, they're still interested, last, I'll say April of this year, might have been March, we went to the city council and got city council's consent to go ahead and work with the Avala, they're called the Central Coast Aquarium now, to work with the Central Coast Aquarium folks on a public-private partnership, although they're a nonprofit, public nonprofit, so it's kind of a public-public, but, public meaning the city working with that nonprofit towards their development proposal of redeveloping that lease site, which we currently are doing. We've been talking with the executive director, and they've been, continue to hone their proposal, and taken on that site in 2018 when it's available, so, that is underway. It's not Marine Research Facility, the gene was maybe thinking of back in the day on lease site 49, but they are proposing that. I haven't seen, nor have they produced entirely what their exact plan is, but they did have a research element in that, they were talking to NEP, and Cal Poly, and Dean went, and they're still involved, to my knowledge, so, it will have a marine research and education large element to it, so that's, that's currently underway, and I think the HAB's role in that is when, when they bring that forward and have it daylighted, I think, again, that's something that gets routed through the Harbor Advisory Board for our input and advice, and where we think it sees.
All we can do is wait until we see something from them.
Okay. Okay. Four B is enhance and support harbor enterprise goals. It's a kind of a broad topic, but I think it encompasses a couple of things. How we would, would we'd like to approach that, ladies and gentlemen? Ron, you have any ideas?
Yeah, I think that the Harbor Advisory Board in some way, shape, or form would potentially plug in to the Harbor Department, because the Harbor Department manages the enterprise zone, and plug in to the city's economic development initiatives, and see if there's opportunities for symbiosis that are not currently being pursued. But I have no information about any dialogue between the city's economic development department and the Harbor Department, so I really don't know whether, whether that's a fruitful exercise. Eric, has there, has there been dialogue between the city's economic development program and the Harbor Department?
Yeah, there has. Nothing I can specifically report on at this point, but as you know, Sam Taylor's our new deputy city manager, and economic development is one of his primary goals in life in this job. And we've been talking a fair amount between he and city manager and myself, and even Scott Graham with the community development department, how we bring the lease redevelopment process forward. He's done a great job at reaching out to the broader, both, I think, county and regional community, looking for folks that want to come in and pursue economic development opportunities. And when they're waterfront related, he comes to me. We're currently working on a couple of projects that may come to fruition. Aquarium's one of them, obviously. That's one, the aquarium site. And how we, how we shepherd that forward through the process. If that gets redeveloped as hoped, it could be a very large economic developer. So, when he has folks that come to him, you know, he does like say a lot of outreach on the internet and other financial worlds, when he has folks come to him saying, hey, you know, we're interested in doing a this or doing a that. If it's waterfront related, he comes to me and we start identifying potential properties or leaseholders that may have empty sites or sites that are, that are ready for redevelopment that may need partners, so that's, we're, we're sort of doing that already in degree, we're kind of revamping our process. We're largely, in the past, I've operated in a vacuum in terms of the rest of the city until we go to the city council with what a leaseholder's proposal might be. There really wasn't a lot of outreach to the outside, so we're starting to do that.
We'll keep a monitor on that. Anyone else has any ideas on that? And then I go to, bless you, the marine sanctuary, which I think is going to come in the forefront. I'm hearing and seeing letters to the editor, pro and for and against. I think this is another topic that we need to be as knowledgeable as possible. I think it probably should entail a ad hoc committee. It's going to be a lot of work to even go through the actual act, how it pertains to fishing, how we can obtain local control, which seems to be the buzzword for some people that would like to see some type of sanctuary. Can we have one on a local basis as opposed to a national? So, that's how I see that, and I think that should be brought up at our next meeting to see if we can actually get one of those. Alan?
Sanctuary affects harbor operations as well.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. As Neil stated to me, his, his operation back there in the Back Bay will be impacted. So, maybe this is something that you would want to, well, actually, you're already on the, oh. Okay.
So, process-wise, where we are on sanctuary, as you know, the Chumash proposal was accepted by NOAA, N-O-A-A, for placement on the inventory list for possible future consideration. The city council, as you know, didn't vote to take any specific action on that Chumash proposal that was in front of them a couple of meetings ago. What they did want was more information. They felt, kind of like, we, I think we spoke at the joint Harbor Advisory Board and Council meeting, you know, a lack of information on either side of the topic, whether you're pro or con doesn't really matter, just getting better educated and what, what it all means and how it all works. The council did want to see NOAA come back with some sort of an educational forum. I'm working right now with Bill Duros, he's the Rest Coast Regional Director, to bring NOAA here on a, on a community forum basis, not a decision-making basis. It's not going to be an advocacy pro or con, it's just that NOAA's going to come here, tell us what the sanctuaries are, how the program works, and how the process works for sanctuary designation, and that's the first thing the council wanted. I see a fair amount of opportunities for this body, and again, maybe through ad hoc committees to identify the areas of additional needed information, maybe the data gaps that we think the city's missing. From whatever pro or con side, at this point, doesn't matter, but where the data gaps are and possibly fill those in.
So, basically, we're going to hold a public forum, not so much through the harbor, but as a public community outreach, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I think NOAA will come in and do a presentation and then break out to different areas of expertise for people to go ask questions and answers to and get the information.
Do we foresee that happening this year?
Yeah, we're trying to shoot for sometime in early December
Okay.
for that.
So, maybe what we should do is make sure that this meeting and have some people that are interested in learning more about it attend it, and then we can talk about it at our, maybe January meeting or...
No, I'm going to propose it as a future agenda item, formulation of an ad hoc committee during the next formal meeting.
Okay.
We can move it faster than that.
Your prerogative. Your prerogative. Okay. So, that's what we're going to do, is there any other discussion on that?
No, I agree with Ron.
Okay. And then, the next two that we did put down, I think that they're already being done. The cost allocation budgetary process, we do have an ad hoc committee consisting of myself, Ron, and Neil. And we do have an action plan. So, that is ongoing, and we'll be reporting back to the board on our activities. And then the recognition of the off-boat fish sales. You know, that's interesting, I mean, you know, we voted to do it on a permanent basis, but I don't, I don't see any marketing of it or any publicity of it. How can we, if that is our job at the, at the HAB, to make that happen, or is that the city's job? I don't know. Eric or Neil?
I would kind of lean on the fishermen. If they don't want to participate, the, the opportunity exists, but for the city to spend resources that the fishermen aren't necessarily wanting to use, it might need a consensus of the fishermen first, just,
Yeah.
and then them come together with the Commercial Fishermen's Association to say, this is what we need support on.
How we're going to...
How you're going to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, you need to, yeah, speak to your folks and come back to us.
Maybe just a regular Harbor Advisory Board agenda item.
Right.
Bring it back, bring guys that want to do off-the-boat sales. Maybe if the guys that have done the Fishline app want to come in and speak to how that's set up in Half Moon Bay and get some more information, ideas out there, and come up with some ideas on how to implement. Like I say, we, the city council, a couple of meetings ago, while you were gone, okayed on a permanent basis, doing it on public dock, so.
Yeah, I mean, what would be so nice to have a farmer's market, a fisher's market? Now, I know that, you know, it's all seasonal, it's all whatever, and I know there's a lot of obstacles to it, but...
That's what the Saturday market started out being, was a fisherman and farmer's market. But now, it's not really getting that rubric anymore.
No.
The internet works very well for that. There's another site Lori French is involved with, We Fish Wild. Between those two sites, there's potential there that, that I think it could, something could happen there if we...
So, why don't you get back to your people and get back to us and, and then maybe...
Figure out where it could fit on an, on an agenda item coming up.
We'll see if there's something...
Steer towards the agenda.
Okay, so the, I think we've allocated some things, I'm sorry this has taken so long, and I hope that there's been some... Number six, oh, Measure D, sorry. So, we have Measure D, it's in place, it's a city item. Is that something that we as a Harbor Advisory Board want to look at, bring up?
It is currently on the, at least it was, I'm pretty sure it still is, on the list of future agenda items for the city council to take up. I know the council's expressed interest in a couple of different venues of revisiting Measure D and seeing whether they want to try and define it better, or whether they want to see if there's any initiative to get rid of it, make it stronger, whatnot, so. There is going to be a review of Measure D at some point, it's not, I don't think it's tentatively scheduled for any meetings in the next several months that I'm aware of.
So, then we as the HAB, if this is something that's important to us, and especially important to, if they would, you know, we should become more knowledgeable on it.
And I think, kind of like the cost allocation process, I think this could be something that would make sense to feed through the Harbor Advisory Board first, get the Harbor Advisory Board's input and advice to the council. Once the council starts warming back up to that, and if we see when that, you know, if it's coming up in, say, you know, March or April, where we think we want to start considering, if it starts getting on the, on the radar screen, the way we're doing with Dave now, the new city manager, we've kind of got about, let's say, six months out. He's starting to plot and plan, you know, things that are on that future agenda item, putting on, okay, March 2016, got two things on there, April, we got one thing. Obviously, the closer you are, the more things are on the list, when that thing starts to pop up on the radar screen out at the 15-mile range, maybe at that point, we start looking at Harbor Advisory Board and seeing how we want to route it through the HAB.
And then maybe in the interim, if anyone's interested in learning more about it, they ought to go online. It's online, is that correct, Eric, to really understand what the ordinance is? Can we find that on the city website?
Pretty simple ordinance, you just, you go into the, yeah, I mean, if you go into the city's municipal code,
Okay.
under the zoning section, there's the, it's the commercial fishing, I don't remember the exact wording, but it's...
17.44...
Yeah, it's in, something in the, in the zoning code.
Okay.
Measure D is right in there.
So, let's take a look at that, folks. Yes, Ron?
As, if you think it's appropriate as the chair, you might consider reaching out to the city council liaison and say, you know, we understand that the council at some point in time may take another look at Measure D, an updated look at Measure D, and that the Harbor Advisory Board is prepared to assist the council with that process, and taking what Eric just said, you know, maybe doing that in some preliminary way to assist the council.
Okay.
I mean, that's a, I mean, that's a great point, Ron, because as you know, our council liaison, John Heading, expressly, I think at the joint meeting we had, said he's going to set up regular meetings with you, the chair, and myself, the Harbor Director. Monthly meetings, if not a little sooner, that would be a perfect venue for saying, okay, here's our priorities, here's what we think we want to do, feeding this to you, to the council, you let us know how you think it needs to go, and then we kind of get that dialogue going back and forth that so we're all working in the same direction.
I've actually, as I said, I did meet with John for two hours. He does know that we're having this meeting today. Might be listening, might not.
I'm meeting with him next week.
Okay, yeah, he said he was going to meet with you. So, he wants to take an act of interest.
Yeah.
He has the time, he has the ability. He's, you know, a former CEO of a couple hospitals, that's, he's also a pharmacist by trade. He's had, he still has his pharmacy license, doesn't work the Morro Bay Drug Store, but his family does. And he's passionate about Morro Bay. So, I'm excited, actually, so. I will bring that to John's attention, and I'll report back to the board at our next meeting on what he says, on what direction he'd like to see us go. So, given all that, Eric, you have all these notes. You're going to give these back to us, get them out to us? And...
Well, Mr. Chairman, why wouldn't this board do what was suggested to us in the, in the joint meeting with the council and take an opportunity to report directly to the council on what we've accomplished tonight and what
Well, no, I, I...
and what our plans are?
Well, I, I think that that is, is, is a foregone conclusion. I just, I, I think Eric is taking notes, I mean, I haven't taken notes, so I don't think I have the ability or the expertise to compile what happened here today. But Eric is going to be doing that, correct? Or no?
Yeah. Well, I'm taking minutes.
Okay. Now...
And the, you know, the, sort of the major themes here, yeah, and I'll, I'll make the results of our little poll here look a little nicer, but we'll
And then I will present this to the, to our liaison, to the city council, tell them what we're doing, and get his thoughts.
Yeah, and I'll be speaking to my, my boss, city manager about it, and see where we want to start weaving these things together and...
And then me and you, Eric, will meet to see if there's any friction between these people. David and John, or if they have any other suggestions. Ron?
Good.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything to share tonight? I thank you for your time, your energy. Alan, welcome back. It's always nice to see your lovely face. How did your, your mast hold up?
Oh, great.
Good.
Only one major accident.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
My second.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I hear a second. All in favor, all, any, 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 all in favor, aye.
Aye.